Lord, it looks like we have everyone. Let's, uh... The meeting of the Aurora City Council's hereby called the order for June 24th, 2019, with a court, please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
Here.
Alderman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Mesiacos.
Here.
Alderman Denell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Hartburns.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderman Laubshake.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins.
Here.
Alderman O'Connor.
Here.
All present.
Please rise as we have a moment of silence in honor of our act of service, men and service women, as well as our veterans. Please remain standing as Alderman Hartburns introduces the individual to give our invocation this evening. Moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have coming to us to do the invocation in the name of none other than Elder Gregory Leroy Jones. Elder Jones has come from great stock for those who have been around the city for a number of years. His father, Matthew Jones, was the first African-American to appear on the City of Aurora Planning Commission. He stayed until his sickness and he may be known for many bridges that has been designed in Joliet, Illinois. But Elder Jones is well-loved, well-known, and he's done a great job throughout this great city. He is assistant pastor of the Greater Mount Mount Church of God in Christ. Would you please receive none other than Elder Gregory Leroy Jones for our invocation.
Gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this gathering of leaders and constituents. We ask even now that you would give clarity of thought, that you would give consideration of emotion and agendas and all of that, but most of all, let there be peace and harmony. Let there be unity in this wonderful city we call the City of Lights, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Is their motion approved in the minutes of April 23rd, 2019, close session meeting? Motion by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Franco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is their motion approved in the minutes of June 11th, 2019, City Council meeting? Motion made by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Franco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is their motion approved, the appointment of a sergeant-at-arms for this meeting? Motion carries by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Mr. Muhammad, can you give us our presentations?
Sir, good evening, everyone. The mayor's of the council, to all of our community members who are here, as we close out this first half of the year, we're excited tonight with a number of presentations representing our city. We have individuals who represent us locally, we call our local heroes that we'll honor tonight, those who are representing us statewide, as business owners and beauty pageant winners, those who are representing us throughout the nation as television stars, and those representing us throughout the entire world internationally as weightlifting champions. So I just saw him walk in. So we talk about there's something happening here, certainly tonight you will see exactly what is happening. For our first presentation, we're asking the mayor to please join us, along with Alderman Yamas and Alderman Franco, the fifth ward as well. We're honoring tonight a senior at Westboro High School, I see the superintendent here, Dr. Craig, who has a presentation today, who recently represented his school, his community, and our country as a member of Team USA at the 2019 World Championships in Fiji. Will Easley, we can give him a round of applause. He's qualified for Junior Pan Am Championships in Cuba, but when his spot on Team USA later opened up for the Worlds, he decided to pass on the Pan Am event and go right to the World Championships. Let's take a quick look before we do the presentation. Will, Will had a snatch of 266.8 pounds and a clean and jerk of 341 pounds for a total of 608 and a half pounds, making him the 11th place finisher in the entire world, right here from Aurora, Illinois. Maybe they'll hear me, maybe he'll be 11th place person in the entire world, right here from Aurora, Illinois.
Handing that to Alderman Yamas to place the medal on his neck, because Alderman Yamas actually worked out with him for a number of years and lifts similar amounts of weight. At least that's what he told, that's what he told. But in honor of, uh, Will Easley, it is my honor to present, um, the Team USA 2019 Junior World, for the Team USA 2019 Junior World Championships, for successfully representing your school, your city, your country in the 2019 Junior World Championship in Fiji as a weightlifter, and for clinching the 11th place finish in the entire world. You make us all proud here at Aurora, brother.
Uh, it's like the Emmys, I wasn't really prepared for, I'm gonna prepare, but, um, I'll make this brief, but I remember four years ago when he started, I was running a weightlifting camp at Westboro High School for middle school kids, and I noticed a stout, uh, young man, and, uh, I knew the family, so I was like, well, this, you might, it was worth a try. I said, do you want to lift weights? And he said, okay. Came in, but, you know, who knew that in four years, and that's really a pretty short amount of time, um, and if you know anything about it, the training involved is really brutal. Even now, he's starting another phase of training, trying to make another world team, and he's working out seventy, seven times a week, so, and eventually he'll go eight times a week, so that's twice a day sometimes, so it's really a commitment, but I, I'm so proud of him. I just can't, I just, really, it's not that much work. I write the program and kind of sit back and watch him, watch him do things, and it's really amazing when you get to be over forty, the things that, you know, young, young people can do, uh, but that's, that's really all I have to say. He's gonna be a senior this year, and by the way, at the World Championships, he's one of the youngest competitors, so he has about two, two more years left to compete at that level, um, and who knows, I mean, usually people work their way into Junior Pan Ams, Youth Pan Ams, but Will just decided to go straight to the Worlds, um, you know, why waste time, I guess, I don't know, so, uh, so that's, so again, I'm so proud of him, and I'm actually very honored that I'm his coach, you know, a lot of times people nowadays, they'll look online, they'll find other coaches, or do this, do that, and he stayed with me, and I'm just, uh, I'm very, very grateful for that, so thank you very much for coming.
We'd like you to join us, so Westboro High School, I'd like to have a quick... Now, Will's gonna weightlift, compete now against the mayor in the old...
I give up.
Another round of applause for Mr. Will Easley, senior of Westboro High School. We can have a video presentation for this one if you want to, for the scene, we're gonna ask you to join us back with, uh, the alternate of this next recipient, moving from international athletics to national academics. The hit Nickelodeon TV show, Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader, is back for a new season with host John Cena and a team of students who are giving adults a run for their money in general trivia. We know the show pretty well. One of the stars this season is Aurora's own Tristan Tucker. Let's give him a round of applause. He was a fifth grader during the tape of the show, and now he's excited to enter his middle school year in the fall. He was featured recently on Windy City Live with Val Warner and Ryan Schefarini to preview his talk show, his game show for the season. Here's a clip of Tristan.
...fifth grader, turns out most of us aren't, but it is back, it's on Nickelodeon, and to remind adults that our children are future, please welcome from Aurora, Tristan Tucker. Earlier, he was smarter than me, and you said, "Of course, of course." So you gotta be pretty smart to be on this show, right? And you've only taped the show, but you, we don't know how you did, did you win?
You've got to watch the show.
I'm always gonna ask you, right here, so I'm gonna read you, okay, and did you, did you always want to be an actor?
It's true. Ever since I was at a young age, I just...
No! Two year old? Do you remember two year old?
Yes.
I'm gonna act like one movie where you watch me inside, I'm gonna do that!
Well, I've been watching a lot of movies and stuff with my parents, like Transformers, Avengers, and yeah, there's a lot.
Yeah, I know you have a YouTube channel, and you did a commercial too, what was the commercial for?
McDonald's commercial.
Oh, nice.
And I joined with my coworkers, and it was very funny.
And I'm the firm, the CEO. Okay, so how did you get onto, uh, want to be smarter than a fifth grader?
Well, I did a self-taping, and my mom recorded it, and I just told them about me and things like that.
Yeah, so you're a good student, what school do you go to?
I go to the Williams Elementary School in Aurora.
Okay, great, think about all the fame that you're getting.
Oh, gosh, you seem so amazing, oh my gosh!
So you're not a big fan on campus then? You're getting ready, are you getting ready to go to high school, or did you just finish fifth grade, or are you going into fifth grade?
I essentially did.
Okay, so you're getting ready to go into middle school now? Are you, uh, are you a straight A student?
Of course! I'm a D student.
Oh, what do you want to invent?
One of the things that will stop problems on the first...
Oh, very nice.
So are you gonna still call it, like, time for the acting?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll be an inventor slash actor? You don't have time to live with that limbo. Yeah, alright. That is smart. Uh, when's time, Val? She didn't notice that.
No!
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
And you're getting a twisted...
Here we go, here's the question, uh, this is the question, and here you go, if you put on four current US coins under the couch cushion, and they added up to 25 cents, three of the coins must be what denomination?
Four current coins?
Yeah.
Under the couch, can they come up to 25 cents?
Yes. And then a train, a coin. There you go. Name two of the four states that border Texas.
Um, Texas, that would be New Mexico.
Yes.
I lived in Roswell, New Mexico, four years, you didn't know that? Uh, it would be, uh, New Mexico, it would be New Mexico, and then it would be, um, Kansas. I mean, I can't, uh...
Tristan, do you have the answer?
Of course, I do.
All right, and sure you check out this carry right here, Tristan's in you tomorrow on Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader on Nickelodeon, we are gonna be rooting for you, Tristan.
And we're rooting for him right here in Aurora, ladies and gentlemen, please welcome the star of Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader, Tristan Tucker. Everybody, do please join us. He'll be presented tonight with the award of excellence and the Medal of Excellence.
Now, is this young man in your ward, brother? Oh, I'm a, I'm a, yeah, I'm gonna give you the honors.
The mayor's award of excellence is honorably presented to Tristan Tucker, representing your school and your community as a contestant on Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader? Your sheer intelligence and commitment to excellence inspires us to be better. You make Aurora proud.
Round of applause, this is Tristan Tucker, superstar, you can see him every Monday night at 7:00 PM on Nickelodeon. We're gonna do a trivia contest between all the ultimate and Tristan, but we'll save that one for the next time. Start with word one. Another big round of applause, thank you to the doctor family, Val MacFerrin, the mayor, Tristan, congratulations. From international to national to the state of Illinois, we're so honored to have with us tonight, Miss Illinois of America, Miss Illinois for America, who was crowned last month, a business owner here in the city of Aurora. Please join me in welcoming Miss Monica Patanker. Monica, who represents the city of Illinois at the Miss for America Pageant in Las Vegas in August, she's an attorney and a partner in the law firm of Pecone and Patanker, PC, right here in Aurora, Illinois. She received her JD from the University of Notre Dame, and an LLM in taxation from Washington University in St. Louis. She's an entrepreneur with her own law firm, she's a community-involved activist, and she devotes her time to performing Indian cultural dance at festivals in Illinois throughout the entire year. We're so honored that she'll be joining our Indian-American Community Advisory Board as a special guest in this year's Fourth of July Parade. One more round of applause for the 2019 Miss Illinois for America, Monica Patanker.
The mayor's award of excellence is honorably presented to Monica Patanker. 2019 Miss Illinois for America for setting a standard of excellence and elegance as you represent our community and our state, and for being committed, a committed small business owner in the city of Aurora. One more round of applause.
Five years ago, in September, I will have started my law practice here in the city of Aurora. My firm actually has roots in the city dating back forty-five years. My law partner has practiced in the city of Aurora for forty-five years, and we are just so honored to be business owners in this wonderful city, and I am so excited to represent our entire state at the national competition coming up in August. So thank you so much for being happy, and thank you to everyone here this week.
Also like to recognize both Will and Tristan, who've been invited to join the mayor on his floating Fourth of July Parade, it's all about Aurora Strong, and that's where we honor our local heroes. Nine days, we'll celebrate our Fourth of July activities and parade right here in the city of Aurora, under the theme Aurora Strong. This year, we have twenty-five co-grandmarshals for the first time in the history of Aurora. We looked at who really helps to define Aurora Strong, the community said, "This individual group of people set the standard of what it means to be an Auroraan, to be proud of where you are, and to really be Aurora Strong." This year's co-grandmarshals are twenty-five members of Aurora's 911 operating team. Tonight, we have ten members of the team with us, it's a department clearly that we can't close down and ask everyone to come, so ten members who are here with us. But just to give you some stats before we invite the chief and the deputy chief down to join us, last year, 911 operators answered 247,489 calls, including those for service for Aurora Police, Aurora Fire, and North Aurora Police, and non-emergency calls. That averages to six hundred and seventy-eight calls per day, twenty-eight calls per hour, or one call every two minutes, every hour of every day of every week of every month throughout the year. To keep Aurora safe, to keep Aurora sound, and to keep Aurora strong. Please join us, Chief Tristan Zeman, Deputy Chief Keith Jackson, come on down, Commander as well, and come on down. And our fire chief, Gary Crees, is here, but come on down. Let's give a round of applause to our... Tonight, joining us, we are presenting them with medals, flowers, and the Medal of Valor. First, we invite down the supervisor, Jacqueline Hobgad. I'm gonna ask him the form of guy in the middle. Next, we have Miss Lindsay Evans. Next, Tara LeFane. Our next recipient, Gillian Turner. Our next recipient, Lori Kruger. Our next recipient, Tracy Whalen. Next, we have Miss Kelly Gruka. Miss Samantha Marrero. Mr. Devon Peterson. And Miss Amy Adams. Aurora, can we give a big round of applause to our 911 operators answering 247,000 calls plus per year? They are the first line of the first responders, helping out Aurora Police, Aurora Fire, North Aurora Police, they keep Aurora safe, they keep Aurora sound, they keep Aurora strong. These ten represent these twenty-five on the screen who serve as the grand marshal of the 2019 Fourth of July... Oh, you can do a little better than that, Aurora. They represent all of us, they stay behind the scenes, they've earned so many hours to make certain Aurora can be what we are. We're gonna ask both of our chiefs and the mayor to share a few words before we take a group forward.
The people you see up here are the heroes behind the scenes, and I can tell you right now how uncomfortable they are standing up here, uh, because they actually prefer to be behind the scenes, but that just tells you, um, how committed they are to their purpose, and I can tell you that not just at our most recent shooting that happened on the, on that day, they rose to the occasion, but they do it every single day. Behind the scenes are heroes, and we are so proud of them and the work that you all do, and we thank you for your service and your commitment to the city and the citizens of the city, um, and, and to all of us. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much, uh, we get used to hearing your voices but not seeing your faces. Your voice is calm us all the time in the storm, your voices are always there. We recognize who you are by your voices all the time, so thank you for that, I know you put up with a lot from all of our men and women sometimes, and thank you for your patience, your endurance, and, uh, your job is, is nerve-wracking. I know that you wish you were out there with us after you take that call, you know, you want to know how it ends, and you want to be there, and you want to see all that stuff, but, uh, no, we appreciate what you do, and thank you for being there for all of us, seriously.
You know, I think it's always easy to tell the heart of a person when you see how much they're willing to serve, and what you don't know about these folks is that they serve and serve and continue to serve. They work long hours, they work weekends and holidays, they work through sometimes their, their family events, and they continue to serve. So we know the heart of, of our, of our folks here, and it touches me, you know, I, I can tell you that as I sat and listened to the radio chatter, and how calm and, and cool and collected, and how hopeful these folks were on that day when we had that shooting, I can say I was never more proud to be the mayor of a city that had such great people, committed people to serve our, to serve our community. And even more so, it touched my heart because my mom was a 911 operator for years and just retired a year ago, and in hearing them, I heard her voice and recognized what she had gone through over the last twenty years to continue to serve our community. So it is my great pleasure to have them lead us in the Fourth of July Parade and have them be our marshals, uh, and I wish we could do so much more, but leading us is what I, I think, you know, will show that, you know, their willingness to serve, show that, it will show them we appreciate their willingness. So let's give them another round of applause for everything...
We're gonna release them shortly, because we have a party for them at the fairground, everyone else is invited to jump, but I'll let the mayor release them, but we do, I'm gonna ask the chief to step back down, as we talk about APD, um, we have a, a special announcement, you know, on that fateful day of February 15th at Henry Pratt, the day before, our longtime PIO of the Police Department of Eritrea, and so on that very next day when this tragedy happened, a sergeant with the Police Department for a long time stepped in as the interim PIO, and he's done an amazing job until this point, please give a round of applause for Sergeant Rowley. We always love when he's live on camera, because our Facebook likes go up like by a thousand, so we appreciate you, man. Uh, but we have hired a, a new public information officer for the Police Department, and I'll turn it over to Chief Zeman.
Before I introduce our new PIO, Paris, I, I really do want to reiterate what you said, Sergeant Rowley, thank you so much for stepping up. Uh, when, when Dan Ferrelli retired, uh, we said, hey, you're just gonna be the interim guy for just a minute until, uh, we get, we get our new guy in here, um, we were doing a, a search, and so he said, no problem, I'll step up, and, uh, but little did we know that, uh, that that was, that next day, um, was going to test him, and he did a phenomenal job representing our Police Department, and he did it with class and truly with, with calm and ease, and he really is a natural at it. Um, I'm a little sad to see him go back to patrol, he's not sad about going back to patrol, he's, he's literally running, he'll be running out the door to do that, um, but, but really, that's what happens, and that's what we do, you know, this is, he's not even in his training, you know, I mean, he's been a sergeant, and yet he stepped up, put himself, you know, in a couple classes, and he figured it out, and that's what we do, you know, it's when, when you're tapped on the shoulder and asked to do something, you just figure it out, and that's exactly what he did, so thank you very much, Sergeant Rowley, for stepping up, we're, we're very proud of having you on our show. Paris, can you come on up here? I would like to introduce Paris Luben. Uh, he brings years of journalism experience in the ever-changing world of media, and he comes to us from Indianapolis, where he was an Emmy-nominated investigative reporter at WRTV, the ABC affiliate in Indianapolis. Uh, before that, he worked as a reporter in Lexington, Kentucky, from 2013 to 2015, and he began his career in the Chicago area with captured news, serving as breaking news journalists, covering breaking news throughout the Midwest. He's a graduate of Columbia College in Chicago, so he's kind of come full circle back to this area. So that's a little bit about his resume, but I don't want to talk about that, I want to talk about the mound of, of applicants that we got for this position, and when I say a mound, I mean, there was a tower of them, and he stood out to us because of his journalism background, but that wasn't what sold it for us. Uh, when we were interviewing of, of the applicants and we narrowed it down, it was Paris that understood, number one, we have a healthy respect for media and journalism, and, you know, they're going through a hard time as well, and they have a job to do, and it's a very important job, and it's important that we as government are transparent, and that we work so closely together, so what drew me to him was his journalism background, and, and of course, his respect for the media, but also the respect for the police. And, and when I talked to a couple people I knew from Indianapolis Police Department, they said that not only is he a great journalist, but he cares a lot about the policing and law enforcement profession, and trying to make it better, and to bring the two worlds together. And if you know anything about this city, our administration, this command staff, this Police Department, is that not only are we committed to transparency in this city, we want you to know what goes on, even if, even sometimes if it's bad, in the city this size, that's bound to happen, we have crime, but we also, uh, we also have a lot of great police officers, and we do a lot of great things, this team does amazing altruistic things, and these officers have so much personality, and we really want to bring that to the forefront. We want you to get to know our police officers, and we felt as though Paris would be the We want you to get to know our police officers and we felt as though Paris would be the best one to tell our story. And so with that, I am honored to bring him on the team. Please give him a warm welcome, be nice to him, you guys. We're proud to have him, so.
Thank you very much to the chief and the mayor. I'm excited to join the team here in Aurora and still learning everything as I get computers and everything like that. But really looking forward to showcasing this department. They do a lot of great work and I was drawn to them just by seeing the work when I came through the interview process, seen it on the social media already, but they do a lot of great things and I want to be able to show that to the community, so thanks again.
Another big round of applause for Paris Luban. Another round of applause for public safety in general, for APD and AFD, for our 911 operators. For Miss Illinois for America, Mr. Tristan Pucker and Mr. Will Easley, thank you.
All right, now we do have one more presentation, but it might be a little bit long. We want you guys to cross the street to the party if you'd like to, you got some good stuff over there waiting for you. So I'll just give you guys, if you choose to, a few minutes to file out and head over to the Paramount.
Thank you to everyone, we appreciate all of our special guests. Please join us at the Paramount for food. We honor our 911 operators, please have a good time with everyone. Everyone's welcome to join us.
All right, let's go ahead and get started with our next presentation.
Good evening, everyone. We are the last of the presentations today. Today, we have the fortunate opportunity to present to you the workings of the Aurora Education Commission. The Aurora Education Commission was created at the latter part of 2018. And on this commission, we have representation from all of the school districts that serve Aurora, and that's six, many of the private schools as well, and then the presidents of the higher education institutions that are in Aurora, as well as some economic development members, as well as at-large members, the residents of the city. And the purpose of the commission is really to bring all of our education partners to the table to identify ways in which we can work together with the city to identify the education goals and work towards those goals as a collective body. So today, we have with us the Chair of the Education Commission, Dr. Jeff Craig, who is the Superintendent for West Aurora School District.
Thank you, Dr. Holloway, and that's our presentation for tonight. I'm honored to be able to address Mayor Urban and the City Council and members of our council. This is some new territory that we're breaking into. As Dr. Holloway mentioned, our Education Commission is to engage in some constructive dialogue with all the academic institutions, both public, private, and in our higher education and with our business partners around the city of Aurora. And our mission really is to provide recommendations to the city of Aurora and how we can provide the best possible educational opportunities for our kids and the best possible workforce for our city of Aurora. So our why, and this was based off of Mayor Urban's Transition Plan for Education and Economic Development, really follows in suit with his vision to how we bring all the collective knowledge and all the collective resources of all of our education and business institutions. And as Dr. Holloway said, back in August of 2018, this really won't be embarked on this journey. I don't know if we have the next one, Christine? This is where we get a chance to share all of our mugshots and I will talk a little bit about our leadership. I appreciate the great opportunity that I get to serve as the Chair of the first ever Aurora Education Commission. It certainly was an honor to be able to work with the great colleagues that we have in the city. Dr. Christine Sobek is the President of Lubanzi Community College, she is our Vice Chair. And Lenore Johnson, Lenore, you are here, if you could stand please, we're not gonna make you talk. She's our treasure. And then right after her is Senator Harrison. Both of these ladies volunteered. They got sore elbows afterwards, but they volunteered and we appreciate what they do, so thank you. The next one gives a foreword, and Dr. Holloway talked about the representation from around the city. You'll get a sense of the flavor between our public school districts, our private schools, our colleges and universities, early childhood, our business population, our at-large folks. Alderman Bug is a representative for the City Council and Dr. Holloway is our liaison to the city. There's a couple of other folks that are here tonight, if I could ask you to stand if they haven't ducked down out of the way. Where's Trish Rooney? Trish from Spark, if you could stand please. Davy Conasani is here, where's Davy, did I see you come in? She heard she was gonna be introduced and left. So we, as you see from this listing, there's a lot of folks that are represented and it's been a great opportunity to work with our folks. One of the first things we had to do was to talk about what we believe. Now, we saw Mayor Urban's Transition Plan, it was very extensive, it was part of his campaign. Education was very important to him. But even within this group, we had to talk about what we believe. And you can see that on the screen in front of you. And Trish has a big smiley face when we talk about learning starts at birth and continues throughout your life. Whether you're 50 or 100, 150, that learning process continues. Educational organizations have the responsibility to embed those skills and prepare learners for life and career success in their instructional practices. I think this is the important piece here is we're all valued partners in education. This commission embodies that and this commission really talks about partnership legality. We step over a lot of blurred lines in terms of private, public and city resources. And then we have the responsibility to advocate for access and equity. Two really important words, is access to all educational resources to all of our kids throughout the entire city of Aurora and equity, we want to make sure that those access points are equal across all of our neighborhoods and all of our constituencies. These core beliefs were developed by our commission and it's something that we put in terms of "we believe" every time we talk about that. So these beliefs allow us to be able to move forward and make decisions. So Christine Anderson is also here, she's an at-large, she is also one of our staff members. But Christine is emphatic about having a flow chart. She is, and she does a phenomenal job. And so this model you see in front of you talks about how we think about opportunities. So when an educational topic is considered and moved through our commission, that moves into the commission members, we entertain those topics, we seek input, we look at current systems and we identify solutions. And then it either goes to a recommendation to our City Council or we talk about, within the commission, we talk about ways we can adapt and apply different solutions. And hopefully, the outcome is an output, a product of our decision-making. And if that decision-making stalls or we don't find the right solution, then it will circle all the way back and we will start again. Part of what we want to accomplish is we want to make sure we take and entertain different pieces of suggestions, ideas, thoughts, concerns, things that are problematic, and help to provide collective solutions, which is why you saw that group that was up there representing so many people around our city. So this was building the airplane while we were flying it. So it took us quite some time to think about how we were gonna function, how we were gonna entertain public presentations, how we were gonna have public comment, how we were gonna report back to the City Council, how we were gonna make decisions. We had to have a framework for that. And while we were doing that, as you just saw with the 911 operators and with our Chief of Police, our Fire Chief, our commanders, all of APD and AFD, is our safety. And that transcends our schools. My district alone, we have 20 different school facilities. So you multiply that over six or seven or eight different public schools, private schools, universities, it's a monumental task. And so part of our challenge, as was evidenced over the Pratt situation, was to find a common communication solution, was to find common strategies and find a common language so that when we talked about what was happening in one of our buildings or one of our districts, the Fire Department, Police Department knew absolutely what was happening. They knew what was taking place and we could have that common dialogue and make sure we were expressing ourselves in an appropriate way. So we invited Chief Zeman and Lieutenant Winecak to come out and talk about the strategies, talk about the vocabulary that's being used in the city of Aurora, to talk about how we address different situations and we categorize actions for our staff and for our students to follow. How we can talk to our parents and let our parents know what's happening in each of our buildings. It was critically important to be able to have that common language and that common approach. And so we are working together with the 23 of us and all of our emergency services to make sure that we're following common strategies, that we're using the same language so that we can talk to each other and we can achieve the common goal of safety for all of our staff and students in all of our schools and all of our workplaces. So that was a presentation that took place and we continue that on a monthly basis to have that dialogue in our districts and with all the leaders in that, those in the safety realm. So we really appreciate it, I know our commission members appreciated hearing from Lieutenant Winecak and Chief Zeman. And last but not least, I cringe when I hear about the video because my face is shown and I don't want to do that to too many people. But this was shown at the State of the City address. And I think it captures why we exist as a commission, what we're trying to accomplish and achieve, and then the folks who are involved with that. So Ms. Anderson, if I could ask you to hopefully, it'll work.
I believe that we do all agree that everyone wants a high quality education and opportunities for all of them. And through that lens, I would posit that the purpose of your Aurora Education Commission is to provide a collaborative collection of resources that centralizes all those ideas and thoughts for all to access. I think it's a great opportunity to recognize the many gifts and talents in our education community and our community of others. We can then go about the business of highlighting those talents and gifts for people, institutions, and agencies to be able to borrow, to be able to implement as they see fit and as they need. You know, right now, our current function of the commission is to lay that foundation, provide that groundwork for future opportunities and for getting all the resources and then to be able to share how people can do life, how people can access. I would also say that over the past several months, having worked with the outstanding men and women that sit on this commission, is that this is a great vehicle to be able to hear the many voices from throughout our community. And for that, I'm very proud to just be a part of the group, be able to facilitate those conversations. And as we move forward in the groundwork, we look forward to exciting opportunities for all of our community.
So once again, it's just been an honor to be able to serve in this capacity. We look forward to continuing our dialogue with our many partners throughout the city to be able to have access to all the resources, provide equitable opportunities to all of our kids, to all of our staff, to be able to improve our educational offerings and to be able to partner with our business partners, not only in the city of Aurora but around the region. And so, once again, I just want to say thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to serve in this capacity and thankful for all of our great partners. And City Council, at this time, if you have any questions, they'd be happy to answer.
Alderman Bug?
I'll make a comment, thank you. I just wanna just thank Dr. Craig for his leadership, his wisdom over the last year in the commission. Of course, this year, we had a very trying situation in February. I don't know if Mayor Urban or the angels looked forward, but Dr. Craig was already in the place as the Chair of that body. And on that day in February, he was right in the thick of things. And he, his leadership was exemplary and he brought that back to the commission and we had those discussions about safety and he was the right person at the right time. And I just want to thank him for all he's done.
Thank you, Dr. Craig. Is that all for presentations, Ms. Rahama? All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the City Council for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during the course of the comments. Members of the City Council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during a time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the Germanos.
Before we go on, Clerk, how many total do we have, folks do we have signed up to speak?
16.
We have 16 people signed to speak. As the clerk pointed out, there's only 30 minutes allotted for public comment. So for some reason, you get up to speak and you find that what you're saying is being somewhat repetitive to what someone else has already said. We won't count against you if you say, I agree with the previous speakers. However, you are free to have your three minutes. We ask you to be respectful of time, given the fact that not everybody will probably have the opportunity to speak today, given the 30-minute time cap. Clerk, can you call the first person?
Valerie Smith.
Smith, if you want to walk up to the podium there? Ms. Smith, you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Valerie Smith and I'm here to appreciate Alderman Shakita Hardburns. To the mayor and City Council, thank you. To Alderman Hardburns, you have became a family legend. We are all happy for you. You always strive for the best, whether it's working with the family, in the community, or in a professional manner in which you attend. You take on decisions that brings along huge responsibilities. Your contributions you give to the people and organizations, it helps makes a difference in their lives. You give up your weekends, your creative talents, your energy to make it happen. And we are proud that you have been able to do so well. We will always support you in all that you do. We love you and God bless. Thank you all for your service.
Gregory Jones?
Pastor Jones, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmen and Women. Actually, I really wanted to say...
Actually, I, I really wanted to say I have a great appreciation for each of you. Uh, I understand that in order to serve this city and to serve your constituents, you have to have some fight in you. Uh, I just want to urge that we remember that the fight is going on outside of here and it shouldn't be inside of here. Uh, every now and then, when a person is, has a spirit of fighting, when they are faced with frustration, or maybe it could even be ambition, uh, sometimes the fight turns inwardly. A house that's divided against itself will never stand. And I just wanna say to Alderman Hartburns, I appreciate you for all that you do for your constituents, for the city of Aurora. Your longevity speaks monuments to just how vital you are to this community. And I want you to know that even in the loss of your mother, uh, you have yet stood strong. And, um, many of those on the council may have lost a loved one, um, and there's nothing like losing your mother. But when you do, it certainly behooves those around you to extend their sympathies, not just in words, but in deeds. And so please be encouraged and thank you all for all that you do for this city.
Thank you. Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Eugene Brown?
Mr. Brown, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to the council, to all the honorees due. I'm here to speak and on behalf of Sister Mother, Alderwoman Shakita Hartburns. I have known her for years. I appreciate all the work that she has done in the city of Aurora and in the, on the east side of Aurora. The meetings that she has called, the things that she has pushed for our streets and our gang affiliated problems, all of those things that she has helped with. And I would like to say, in closing, sickness comes to all of us and it keeps us from doing some things that we didn't do as well, no couldn't, can't do as well anymore. But if it hasn't come to you, just wait.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Anne Mae Peter Patterson?
Call her name again.
Anne Mae Patterson?
Oh, she's on her way. Ms. Patterson, you have three minutes.
To my good friend, Mayor Irvin. I've known him for a long time also, and I really am so appreciative that he has become the mayor of this city that I have been a citizen of for seventy-eight years. Alderman Shakita Hartburns, we would know what to do without you. We would be lost. But I can say that, uh, I knew her when she was a very young woman. She was a mother. She took care of her family. She never neglected them to do this work. She was not trying to shine before somebody for a name or whatever you wanna call it, but she was looking out for the interests of our city, that we all could have the best. And I thank God and thank you for allowing her and working with her. And please, keep your arms around her. She will do you good, do you good and no harm. Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Angie Del Cullens? Angie Del Cullens, not your name.
Next speaker.
David Smith Senior?
Elder Smith, you have three minutes.
Elder David E. Smith Senior, thank you to the Honorable Mayor, City Council, and, uh, Alderwoman Hartburns. The duties of these municipality, Alderman person, you have done those duties as long as I can remember. I've been a member of this city of Aurora, I guess fifty years. And you have also served and do the job that has been assigned to you. You help the constituency of our city and you do it well. If a problem presents itself to you, you find solutions. And therefore, we tip our hat to you and tell you, "Keep on doing what you're doing." Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Dorothy Thomas?
Ms. Thomas, you have three minutes.
To our mayor and to all of the council, I'm here to speak for my sister Shakita Hartburns. I know Shakita, ever since I've been in this city and I've been here over fifty years. And I, one thing I had always admired about her is that she don't take color, whatever nationality, everybody to her is the same. They all need help, they all need help. Many times she's sick, she can stick her head out the door and tell somebody else what to do on the outside. Shakita, we love you and we thank God for all of you. I'm sure everybody's worked hard because this is a great city. I love this city. I'm in it alone now, all my children left, but I'm gonna stay in Aurora. And I don't wanna stay here without Shakita being my Alderwoman. Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Roger Vernon?
Mr. Vernon, you have three minutes.
My name is Roger Vernon. I'm the executive chairman for Big Woods Marmine Neighborhood and a retired certified Illinois assessing officer. The presentation of the committee of the whole would like us to believe that moving the Hollywood Casino from downtown Aurora to Biltor Road has only recently become an option. The actions of the city, however, over the past years say otherwise. Comments from Alderman Lashkey at the committee of the whole last week got me to thinking, why did the city want to move Hollywood Casino? Then it hit me. Downtown, uh, I'm sorry, Aurora downtown revitalization. The casino apparently doesn't fit Aurora's master plan for downtown. Prior to 2015, the ten owners of the twelve parcels on the south side of Biltor Road banded together in the hopes of selling the fifty acres at a higher price than they could individually. These properties were, are unincorporated residential parcels, except one that is a, uh, classified as farm. The highest and best use takes into account zoning restrictions. Therefore, the highest and best use is a residential development. King County is the zoning impermeable authority for unincorporated parcels in King County. The city would have little endpoint on a development unless that, those properties were annexed into the city. In 2015, the city purchased PIN fifteen dash zero one dash two hundred dash zero three two for $750,000. That's three dollars and fifty-eight cents a square foot. The, this effectively split the fifty acres into two smaller parcels of twenty-one and twenty-four acres, more or less. The fifty acres could then not be marketed without city's consent. Therefore, the city became, uh, in the driver's seat. Previously, state law only allowed riverboat casinos. This had to change if this casino was to be relocated. The city has actively pursued the general assembly to change the state law to allow land-based casinos. I understand that that law has now been changed. The city is now ready to take the next step in acquiring the eleven remaining parcels at an outrageous price of up to five dollars a square foot. The current fair market value, according to the Aurora Assessing Office, is less than two dollars a square foot. This scenario explains the actions of the city over the past several years much better than the independent unrelated activities alluded to in the committee of the whole. It shows that the city has been moving, has been planning to move the casino for several years. I encourage the city to vote, or I'm sorry, I encourage the council to vote no to resolution nineteen dash zero four nine five until the city staff can meet with Big Woods Marmine Neighborhood and other residents in the area to develop a, a plan that's acceptable to the law. Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
My name is Bob David. I'm a resident of, of Ginger Woods, the Villas of Ginger Woods on the Cold Circle. I welcome the opportunity to address the mayor and the councilman on the subject of the Biltor Road development. I also attended the committee of the whole and was, uh, interested to find out that, uh, there's a lot of financial implications associated with this proposal. And me and my neighbors, uh, object to the idea of a casino on Biltor Road for two basic reasons. One, we're concerned about the financial implications of this endeavor. And secondly, the quality of life, uh, issues that would be associated with a casino in that area. We have a city that has debt of $950 million. We have unfunded pension liabilities totaling hundreds of millions of dollars. We're looking, and in that meeting, in the proposal, we're looking at an additional thirty to fifty million dollars to move this proposal forward. It has to be funded, paid for, uh, some way. And there was an interesting comment in those, in that proposal about clear goal of no taxpayer impact. That should read, "No taxpayer impact," not a clear goal, because we all know what happens with goals. Sometimes they're met, often they're not met. Also in that, in that presentation last week, there was a line item that caught my interest talking about the casino revenues being projected to increase by eight million dollars. I think they're basically around seven and they're projected to go to fifteen if, if you make the move. I think that might be somewhat speculative at this point to be counting on an increase in gaming revenues when we got a long way to go. And I don't know what the, um, secret is that why the casino would do better than where, um, in the city than what it do on, on Biltor Road. There was also a connection made in that presentation about increasing the assessed value and the to, of the total properties in the city and hopefully, uh, an opportunity to reduce our property taxes. There was a spreadsheet that talked about reduck, increase of, uh, uh, assessed value of properties and then a corresponding maybe reduction in property taxes. But that was a very long-term thing, like twenty years. We need to reduce our property taxes now. Not five years, not ten years from now. Quality of life. I live 1.1 mile from that development, right down Charter Road, hook a right on Biltor and you're there. I don't want a casino with my backyard with all the associated issues. There's a comment, a sentence in the mission, vision statement for the city that I like to finish with. The city exists to provide families and businesses-
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Deb Griselle?
Ms. Griselle, you have three minutes.
Thank you for inviting the public to comment this evening. My name is Deb Griselle and my husband Matt and I have six children. We built our home at twenty-seven thirteen Trojan Lane in northeast Aurora's Ginger Woods subdivision, which sits between Biltor Road and Butterfield Road off of Farnsworth Avenue. Have you visited our neighborhood? It's full of families with children. When I talked to my neighbors, I discovered that they moved to Ginger Woods for the same reasons we did. Good schools, culturally diverse neighbors, close to the Reagan Tollway and Route Fifty-Nine metro station, ease of access to the Batavia Spur of the Illinois Prairie Path, which borders our neighborhood, and lots of beautiful trees, courtesy of the Big Woods Forest Preserve. It's a quiet oasis in the midst of suburbia and it's an ideal place to raise a family. No one in our neighborhood ever complains about Biltor Road, which is the southern border of our neighborhood. It's a narrow two-lane road with a residential speed limit bordered by homes nestled in trees. We're all grateful for the buffer that it provides between our neighborhood and the relatively new Biltor Road entrance to the expanded outlet mall. Like our neighbors, we invested in our home here in Aurora because our neighborhood provided a beautiful, safe place to raise our children. Every family in Aurora wants the same experience for their children. I believe anytime the city of Aurora thinks about changes in our city, aldermen and planning commissions should ask first, "What best supports families in our community?" What, how will our decision impact families? Allowing a casino to occupy any part of the land along Biltor Road will not make life better for families in northeast Aurora. Any business catering only to adults in this way in a residential area is not good for families. But a casino would create high levels of congestion that would forever negatively alter the family-friendly feel of our neighborhood. I would invite any of the aldermen or planning committee members to come sit with our family and our neighbors on my screened-in porch and talk about what the city of Aurora could do to serve our families. In our area, we would all ask the city to partner with the state of Illinois to improve dangerous conditions for car, bike, and pedestrian traffic on Butterfield Road. Illinois Prairie Path users must cross there without a pedestrian bridge or even a traffic light to stop the flow of busy, fast-moving traffic. Children who attend Louise White School and live on either side of busy Butterfield Road have no safe place to cross in order to meet with their friends and schoolmates. Financial resources from the city of Aurora could be put to better use in partnership with the state and other entities for these improvements that will benefit families. Thank you for your time.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Thank you. Uh, my name is Nikki Russo. I also live in the Ginger Woods subdivision. And I'd like to echo all the comments that have already been made and say that I'm a crier, so just, it'll probably happen. Um, in addition to, uh, be con, being concerned about a casino going in on the Biltor Road, uh, property, I have additional concerns about, one, about the city of Aurora becoming a land broker. Um, we have a lot of debt and I think we could better spend our money in other ways. Um, and, uh, to me, the argument that, um, buying this parcel of land would allow Aurora to expand Biltor Road to four lanes is a counterargument to buying the property. Um, expanding Biltor Road to four lanes would mean that there would be a dangerous crossing for the Prairie Path, both on Butterfield and on Biltor. Um, it would make it nearly impossible for me and my neighbors to get out of our neighborhood. It's already, um, during rush hour, nearly impossible to turn left, uh, traveling west on Butterfield out of my neighborhood. Um, you can sit there for ten minutes sometimes and still risk your life getting out of my neighborhood. If you create a four-lane road on Biltor, we will have the same situation going east out of our neighborhood onto Biltor. Um, I, I don't wanna live next to a casino, but I'm also concerned about any development that you would put on fifty acres, one development on fifty acres, because whatever you put there is going to impact me. It's going to impact me and my children. It's going to impact the value of my home. It's going to impact the crime in my neighborhood. It's going to impact the traffic. The recently changed intersection, um, on-ramp, off-ramp from Farnsworth and I-88 is better than it was. But it's still not sufficient for the traffic for the outlet mall. And the rumors that I've heard about a convention center on the west side of Farnsworth will increase that traffic. And some huge development on the south side of Biltor will even more increase that traffic. And that's a concern. We're looking at accidents all the time. And I don't want my kids driving in that. So where do I send them? Over to Naperville? They can't get to their high school in Batavia without having to encounter that traffic. And it makes me nervous all the time when they're on the road. I would urge each of you to come and visit our neighborhood, but in particular, our alderman Yamas and the alderman-at-large, I would invite you to come because you are my personal alderman. I invite you to come and see what our neighborhood looks like before you make any vote on the purchasing this parcel of land. I understand, um, that the vote tonight is not specifically what you're gonna do with the land, but I would invite you to come and see how close we are and see what it would be like if your home was gonna be located that close. be like if your home was going to be located that close to something that big. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'll be speaking on behalf of the young adults and the youth of Aurora. Good evening. My name is Christian Walls, and I'm a resident of the west of Aurora, of west side of Aurora, and I'm a class of two thousand and eighteen graduate of West Aurora High School. I am currently a sophomore at Eastern Illinois University, where my major is nonprofit leadership and public administration. My mother is a social worker at West Aurora High School, and my father is a pastor. Anyone who knows me can tell me, can tell you that I absolutely love Aurora. I have, I've made some of the best experiences here. I've made great friends here and have some dynamic mentors in my life, like Mayor Irving, Clay Muhammad, Alderman Yagarza, and Alderman Shakita Hartburns. That's why I'm here tonight. While I love my city very much, I didn't love reading what I read in the newspaper about another alderman basically saying Alderman Hartburns was unfit for leadership because of the, of the time she spent taking care of her mother, may she rest in peace, and because of her health issues. The alderman said his comments were not personal. I am only nineteen and don't have much experience, but I do know when you speak about someone's mother and their health, it's nothing but personal. What I do know about Alderman Shakita Hartburns is not only is she fit for leadership, she has inspired me and so many of my peers to be leaders as well. Since I was a young student, she has encouraged me to be the best at what I can do and was there to support me along the way. Even when she wasn't feeling too well, she was right there in the front row of some of my biggest moments in high school. And when she even had to go back and forth from Florida to take care of her mother, she would change her schedule to get back to Aurora for some of my, for some of my most important milestones. No matter what, she was there, and I just want to publicly thank you, Alderman Hartburns, for always being there, and want you to know that the youth of Aurora love you and respect you and are here to support you like you have supported us. Although I haven't, I have not met Alderman Smith yet because I was away in college when she was elected, we also, the youth of Aurora also support her as well. I was taught to do unto others what you would have them to do unto you, and as a man, I was taught to respect women no matter what. I hope that can be a lesson for everyone. Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
George Scowens.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. I'd like to comment on the Farnsworth Avenue Bilter Road projects and the relation to the real estate tax bills of Caroline and Stonegate West. I received my real estate tax bill for the year two thousand and eighteen in May, early May of this year. The bill was nine thousand dollars for a one thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven square-foot house in Caroline, a forty percent increase since tax year two thousand and eleven. From what I understand, this is about average for residents of Caroline and Stonegate West. Fifty-four percent of this tax bill is to go towards School District one thirty-one in pensions. Twenty-two percent will go towards Aurora City in pensions. This breakdown is similar to other municipalities in the area. Last week at the city council meeting in the whole, Tenth Ward Alderman Judd Loewstein voiced concern as to the amount of debt the city of Aurora will incur to accomplish the Farnsworth Avenue Bilter Road projects. Staff and others pushed back stating that foresight to build developments such as these are needed for future revenue to run and grow the city. The examples used to support this pushback were the Fox Valley Mall and the Premium Outlets. These were both worthwhile developments that provided substantial revenue for the city of Aurora. However, no revenue for School District one thirty-one. The school tax revenue from these developments go to Naperville District two oh four and Batavia District one oh one. On page twenty-five of CFO Martin Lyons' excellent presentation of Aurora's long-term debt plan, it shows that fifty million dollars will go toward the Bilter Road project, which is in Batavia School District one oh one, and twenty-five million towards the downtown Old Copley slash Avalon Developments, which is in Aurora School District one thirty-one. In Mr. Lyons' verbal presentation last week of the long-term debt plan, he stated the clear goal of no taxpayer impact, but if there are shortfalls in the plan, the taxpayer will probably have to make up for it. Alderman Loewstein suggested that the convention center and casino, which are part of the Farnsworth Avenue corridor plan, would be built on the land the city of Aurora already owns on the west side of Farnsworth across from the entrance to the outlet mall, thus saving the debt incurred from buying the properties on Bilter Road. I support this suggestion because it will lessen the amount of real estate tax bills, the amount they will rise if there is a shortfall in the long-term debt plan. In conclusion, one of the main reasons the real estate tax bills are so high in this is a lack of more residential and commercial development within the boundaries of School District one thirty-one since Caroline and Stonegate West have been built. The current downtown development and the Old Copley slash Avalon Development are two of very few possible revenue-producing projects within School District one thirty-one undertaken in the nine years I have lived in Aurora. Thank you for listening.
Jennifer Ferguson. Marjorie Logman.
Ms. Logman, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm not used to having a crowd tonight. Under the Open Meeting Act, aldermen may not comment while speakers are presenting. Are you aware that by leaving the room during comments, you are commenting? Aldermen that are praised because they are endorsed by the mayor have tainted their tenure as they are here to serve the people of Aurora, not the mayor. Aldermen using the Bible, the women's movement, and the words of Martin Luther King in the council chamber to suit their needs is unbecoming of an elected official, so is bullying in public or behind steeds to get one's way. Today's trend is to run on emotions. Emotions do not last. They wither as any high does and are not always based on fact. It's happening, filling our destiny, and angry responses are not going to sustain Aurora. This is far from what we are about. Using funds to embellish friends, pad campaign funds is sad. Manipulating funds without discretion, discussion, and forethought to make a name for the city in this competitive world will not succeed. It can lead to more taxes and a disgruntled population. I do not appreciate the embellishment of Aurora attendance at events from the Paramount to the Festival as they are overstated and not factual. During the week, the downtown is almost empty. Aurora has a history of developers that come in with great ideas with low background and low expertise. Over the years, they have taken Aurora for a song. The tiptoeing stricts and enhancements to develop Aurora are giving something to the economy but not serving all of Aurora. How can we have free enterprise when the city owns businesses most of downtown and properties throughout the city and then puts regulations on these people? This is not China. This is the USA. We have modeled something after Kansas City about an article that relates to how they are doing. The title of the article says downtown booms are beginning to build resentment, and it's very applicable to Aurora now. Also, the city coffers are not a cash register. They cannot be opened at will. The public needs to reform well ahead of time. Those aldermen that are complacent or ill-informed or not speaking up are as accountable as those that do misdeeds. We, as citizens together, must rise up because we want a city that is fair, that is informed, that is sovereign, and has equality more than just being known. A group of us would like to, that is known as Citizens Together, have some questions before you vote on Bilter Road that we would like a written response, or if you would-
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Clerk, do you have the, can you give the next speaker?
Fran Shaw.
Ms. Shaw, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Fran Shaw. I live on the west side of Aurora. I am here to address the apparent proposal of the city council to take the city into another hundred billion dollars in debt. Really? We're nine hundred and fifty million dollars in debt or more, and you're going to add another hundred million, which means the city of Aurora will be one billion dollars in debt. Does that seem reasonable to you? Our pension on a fire and police are underfunded. The city is underfunded, their pension. It just doesn't seem reasonable to me, and I'm old enough to remember when the casino was built downtown. And the idea was to bring economic development to downtown Aurora. Now we're talking about moving the casino to Bilter Road. I get it. It's a smart business move on the, on the part of Penn National, who's doing very well, by the way, if you look at their numbers. I don't know what their numbers are here in Aurora. I haven't had any time to really dig into that, but that's the job that you should be doing. And I question whether the city of Aurora should be buying property that Penn National could well afford to purchase, and we're going to purchase that. I also noticed that the city has assets of a billion dollars. Included in the assets in most spreadsheets would be property. What property, you know, y'all own a lot of property, and guess what? It's not taxed, which is driving citizen property taxes out of the, you know, skyrocketing. I have a family who lives in Virginia Beach, Virginia. On property that is assessed at the same amount as my west-side house, they're paying two or three thousand dollars a year, okay? My taxes are eight thousand plus dollars a year. That doesn't include water, sewer, and other forms of payment they have to make. So I would ask that before you jump into this, y'all have an obligation as elected officials of this city to ask the hard questions. I don't know what kind of arrangement you have with Penn National, but I would suspect that you need to negotiate a better deal. They need to pick up the price on this. They will then pay you taxes. They can well afford it. Thank you. And, you know, I just have one. Alderman Hartburns, I, my sympathies to the loss of your mother.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
You and I have not always agreed, but I have a great deal of respect.
Let's move on to the, let's move on to the next portion of the agenda. All right, with the court now, please read the consent agenda in full.
Item nineteen dash zero three six nine, a resolution requesting an upgraded annual subscription renewal for executive programs, membership, basic, and leadership team services for IT research and advisory services from Gartner Incorporated of fifty-six Top Gallant Road, Stamford, Connecticut, zero six nine zero four, in the amount of one hundred four thousand three hundred dollars. Item nineteen dash zero three nine two, an ordinance granting a special use permit for a special purpose recreational institution, fifty-two hundred, used on the property located at one eleven North Broadway in one hundred through one hundred and four East Galena Boulevard. Item nineteen dash zero three nine eight, an ordinance aggregating a landscape easement on the property located north of Half and Rectory Road, east of Barrington Drive, and west of Whitethorne Drive in Will County, Aurora, Illinois, six oh five oh three. Item nineteen dash zero three nine nine, an ordinance vacating a city easement, ingress, egress easement, and stormwater control easement on the property located at Half and Rectory Road, east of Barrington Drive, and west of Whitethorne Drive in Will County, Aurora, Illinois, six oh five oh three. Item nineteen dash zero four one zero, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class E City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Arachiga Group One, doing business as El Jefe de la Raza de México, twelve seventy-one, North Lake Street, Aurora. Item nineteen dash zero four two three, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class, Class G one City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Seven Eleven Incorporated, doing business as Seven Eleven, number three eight five zero nine H, to be located at twenty-six twenty-six Ogden Avenue, Aurora, Illinois. Item nineteen dash zero four two four, a resolution authorizing the replacement of the main staircase of the Route fifty-nine Transit Center in the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand two hundred eighty-four dollars and seventeen cents, plus a contingency amount of fourteen thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Item nineteen dash zero four six three, an ordinance vacating a portion of dedicated public right-of-way for Duke Parkway on the property located at twenty-eight sixty-five Duke Parkway to Cage County, Aurora, Illinois, six oh five oh two. Item nineteen dash zero four six seven, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class F City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Yi International LLC, doing business as A Tasty Hot Pot, forty-three fifty East New York Street, Aurora, Illinois, six zero five zero four. Item nineteen dash zero four seven, a resolution accepting the improvements and maintenance security for Union Square. Item nineteen dash zero four eight three, a resolution to award the contract for the East Indian Trail Water Main Replacement and Bike Path Extension Project to H. Lincoln and Sons Sewer and Water Incorporated, seven twenty-two East South Street, Unit D, Plano, Illinois, six zero five four five, in the amount of four hundred three thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars and zero cents. Item nineteen dash zero four eight four, a resolution to award the contract for the West Galena Boulevard Water Main Linining and Replacement Project to IHC Construction Companies LLC, fifteen hundred Executive Drive, Elton, Illinois, six zero one two three, in the amount of one million nine hundred ninety-five thousand and zero cents. Item nineteen dash zero four eight eight, a resolution authorizing director of purchasing to accept per town dump fees from Waste Management of Illinois for the disposal of non-special and special event excavated soil. Item nineteen dash zero four nine seven, a resolution to award the contract for the Iola Road Realignment Project to Berger Excavating Contractors Incorporated, twelve oh five Garland Road, Wakanda, Illinois, six zero zero eight four, in the amount of two million four hundred ninety, four hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventeen two cents, and to appropriate motor fuel tax fund, seventeen dash zero zero three one eight dash zero zero dash CH. Item nineteen dash zero four nine nine, a resolution ratifying the increase of purchase order two nine one two seven one seven, for Rochelle Waste Disposal by two thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty two cents. Item nineteen dash zero five zero two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a grant and execute the program funding agreement in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars from the Illinois Housing Development Authority's abandoned residential property municipal relief program. Item nineteen dash zero five eleven, a resolution requesting approval of Alderman Miranda of understanding between the city of Aurora and West Aurora School District one twenty-nine and with mutual ground regarding Todd School. Item nineteen dash zero five one nine, an ordinance suspending the prohibition set forth in Article Two, Division One, Section forty-eight through thirty-one, D one of the Aurora Court of Ordnances until July nineteen-
Second.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns to accept the consent agenda, second by Alderman Jenkins. Before we take that, are there any motions to remove any items? Are there any questions about the consent agenda? With no motions or questions, will the clerk please call the room?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Zaccos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Saville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Loewstein?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
All these are on these.
Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Clerk, will you now pre-read the first item under unfinished business?
Item nineteen dash zero four nine five, a resolution accepting the assignment of the contractual rights and responsibilities of the Seize the Future Economic Development Foundation Incorporated of Best Aurora for the purchase of certain real property located on Bilter Road and authorizing the city's officers and employees to complete the transactions contemplated by said contracts.
There's been a motion by Alderman Jenkins, second by Alderman Franco. Before we act on that motion, is there a presentation?
No further presentation other than what was at the committee of the whole here to answer any questions that might come up.
There was a prep, a question at the committee of the whole that I don't remember we had at the time about the value, the five dollars per square foot, and if there'd been any comps in the area.
We, we have done a lot of work in terms of the comparable properties. What we try to do is locate properties that were similar, at least over five to ten acres, and I'm just gonna, and I'm happy to talk to anybody after about it, but, but just as a couple that I think you guys would all know, there's a development site at one Ferry Road in Naperville that went for three point three five oh million dollars. That's nine dollars and thirty cents a square foot. There's a development site in Aurora at twenty-three fifty Frieder Lane that went for twelve million one hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. That was thirty-three acres. That's eight hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot. We're comparing it to the five dollars a square foot. We looked at a property in Downers Grove that Bridgepoint developers are gonna, are doing now, eight million, eighteen million- This was against the, we're comparing it to the five dollars a square foot. We looked at a property in Downers Grove that Bridgepoint developers are gonna, are doing now, eight million, eighteen million five hundred thousand dollars, fifty-two point six six acres, which was about eight dollars and seven cents a square foot. Another site at Eolan Deal, Deal Road, thirty acres, thirteen million nine hundred thousand, ten dollars and sixty-three cents a square foot. There are many, many others that we could quote, but just an idea, any, any property purchase somewhat of a science, somewhat of an art, a combination of the two, obviously this was a unique property in terms of trying to acquire nine different properties from nine different owners, and so on. So, the number that was discussed, which includes all costs, there were a lot of other issues floating around in this property in order to settle everything that was done, and we said in the legislature memo that we thought we were purchasing it about thirty percent below the market value. We think that's correct.
Any questions?
If, if we were to purchase this property, do we have a timeline of events, what the next steps would be? I, I know there's some concerns about a casino going in that property, but is there any concrete plans at this time?
The, the, the plan right now, John, you could join in, is to do planning. The idea was that we'd all be better off if we and the citizens of Aurora were involved in the planning process, as opposed to some developer who took advantage of the industrial zone which the property is in. John can talk a little bit more about that. So, we are embarking on a planning process which will include the major stakeholders in the area, of course, the Simon Mall. There's been a lot of talk about the casino. Whether the casino joins that process, it remains to be seen. But the idea is to do an intelligent plan for the fifty acres. There's very few sites available that are fifty acres. We all know that the bottling plant is just on the other side of the entrance of the Simon Mall. That's an example of what could go there by the zoning. We'd like a higher and better use for the property, something that's better planned and so on. So, the goal is really to start and initiate a planning process.
And, and let me just, if you, Mr. Devoe, if you, if you said the fear would be that the developer would effectively come in and purchase all the property and put something there that we don't want or does not the best fit for the city of Aurora, the reality is that almost happened. Is that right?
Correct. I think, John, you might have a little bit more of the history there than I do.
Yeah, in fairly recent history, past couple of years, a developer was trying to accumulate these, these parcels for some, something that is not the quality of development that we'd like. Again, the comparisons for this property should be property that has tollway visibility and is so close to an interchange. Anyone can find a parcel that's much smaller and somewhere right in that neighborhood for smaller dollar value. But this aggregated fifty acres with the view of the tollway, the accessibility to Farnsworth, we're, we're simply trying to control our destiny so that we have the opportunity to do this planning, planning project that should take only several months to a year, so that we have, we position this property where we control the destiny of the property, we get the improvements that we need for the area, and move forward with the highest and best use for the land. One, one other area that I wanted to highlight was for the changes of the zoning. As I mentioned at, at Committee of the Whole, the ORI zoning was designated for South Biltor Road in nineteen ninety-five. What actually happened since then was in nineteen ninety-seven, Ginger Woods actually flipped from ORI to low, low-density residential. So, the fact of the matter is the ORI zoning predates Ginger Woods being there at all. So, it's an important part of the historic changes of what's the zoning that's there.
So, theoretically, there could be a truck depot or factory placed there based on what the current ORI, current designation of that land, is that correct?
Correct. Our ORI, our ORI zoning is pretty flexible, that's correct, yes.
County Housing Residential.
Go ahead, Mr..
And let me just say, in addition to Mr. Devoe's comment about the study, we are not just gonna look at the fifty acres in a vacuum, we are going to look at the entire corridor, including the land on the west side of Farnsworth, and the other available land that runs up to Butterfield that is available. So, it's going to be, as I said at COW, a comprehensive study, planning study. The blueprint is the, is the one that we did on Route Fifty-nine that gave us options, and options geared toward the highest and best use of the property. And so, we have, just like Route Fifty-nine, we have considerable influence to determine our fate as to what's going to come along Route Fifty-nine. We would have the same ability here, provided we close and acquire the property. When the city bought that middle parcel, the intent at the time was simply to have a foot in the door to be able to control the ultimate fate and not have it be, and I believe it was Alderman Jenkins who said at the COW, the potential fate of what could have been at the current Simon Outlet Mall. And so, again, we are looking at the highest best use. We are going to do a study that's gonna be inclusive of all the stakeholders, business, residential, and take it from there, just like we did along Route Fifty-nine.
Questions? Alderman Lauchey.
So, I wanna start with, I represent the people in my ward, and I have a fair amount of high-end homes in my ward, and hundreds, if not a thousand, of my residents pay taxes of twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand, fifty thousand, and they're concerned about what we're doing here. I do not relish being like the contra position, taking this position against the mayor, against my friends in the development department, department. I do not relish this at all. But you heard my residents tonight, most of these are in my ward or part of these in the far end of my ward, who live across, and part of my ward is Ginger Creek, and that's where they live. And it is already congested. There is an outlet mall, we've heard presentations, it's one of the biggest, most successful sales tax generators and visitors to Aurora. We also have the Fox Valley Mall, so between the two of those in my ward, well, actually the outlet mall's not on my ward, but it affects the people, but, you know, if there's, whatever the number is, five million visitors to the outlet mall, if we add a convention center, if we add a casino, it's sort of overtaxing maybe one part of Aurora, and that happens to be my ward and the first ward. We talked about the outlet mall, we talked about the Fox Valley Mall. The city did not have anything to do with those as far as buying property, as far as I know. The, what we're talking about today is, and if we had an end user, like I said last week, if we had a deal with the casino where it was financially a deal, or with a convention center, or with a residential developer, I would be okay with it. But to spend ten million dollars of taxpayer money on the come to be like a defensive purchase, it just seems, and it seems to my residents, as I said, I've got more calls and emails and texts than, than I ever have, all the other issues combined in the last two years, it seems like a big undertaking. Like I said, we already, and, and then when Marty presented it, another fifty million from possibly the casino, that's just such a big expenditure, and it's gonna cost us on the line of credit thirty thousand dollars a month to carry this. We know it's gonna be years before anything happens, realistically. It's not even in the city. We have to annex it, we have to zone it, we have to plan it. So, just the financial part, and then the safety, having all this traffic, or if there is a casino, what happens to downtown is one thing, but then the twenty-four-seven aspect of people living across the street, and it only, not only does it affect Ginger Woods, it affects Butterfield and all the subdivisions to the east of there. We already own ten acres on Farnsworth and Biltor. We have spent nine point four or five million dollars on that. We could easily fit the casino there. If we needed a parking deck, I don't think we would, but we could easily fit the casino there. As I said last, meaning I would love staff to focus on those ten acres, not buying fifty acres, and I don't think for the safety congestion, it's a good idea. And not only are other residents concerned about a casino, they are concerned about a convention center and other things, and if we, like, if, if we had a use and they know what it was, it would be one thing, but I think that's it. So, I will be voting no against it, and I, I wish I didn't have to.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Yamas.
Kind of echo some of what Alderman Lauchey mentioned, I too received a, a good amount of phone calls and emails about this land purchase. Majority of those concerns, like we heard today, were related to a casino there. Most of the residents were in support of development of that property, but they just don't want a casino in their backyard, and I understand the reasons why. They have families, young families, and there are safety concerns. I appreciate those concerns, I would have the same if I lived there. I just wanna make clear that I, I believe in this vision to buy this property. I think the city needs it in order to move forward with a bigger Farnsworth corridor plan, and especially talking about property taxes and the debt that the city's in, what's the alternative if we don't do this? That's what I'm concerned about. This is a way to, to generate some tax revenue. If we don't do it, someone else is gonna swoop in and take that property. We've heard that's happened, or it almost happened before, and I, I don't wanna, from our perspective, to sit back, see someone else do it, and put up another storage facility. That's not what we need, and that's a realistic alternative to this. So, I think if we're gonna move forward with this purchase, we definitely, definitely need the active participation and input from the surrounding communities, especially Ginger Woods, Ginger Creek, that every, if we could set something up, that I have open town hall meetings, or however, if we can meet quarterly, whatever we can do to keep the communities engaged, involved in that decision-making process, I think that would be appreciated, and it would give a better result, something that would be better for the entire community, the entire city. As you said, the, you know, the stakeholders do include families, I think we need to keep them in consideration.
We did, after the committee of the whole, engage with a couple of the residents and offered that exact thing, so we will do that in follow-up.
Questions, comments? Alderman O'Connor.
My comments are intended to be brief, and thanks to some very well-spoken comments by Alderman Yamas, I think it'll be even briefer, I think he said very directly some of my thoughts about the situation, which really pick up from last week, when I said that it's, it's very tough decisions in regard to doing things like this. You have immediate concerns, well-spoken here tonight by, by residents in regard to what all the issues are here. But I said that our responsibility over the years is to do the best long-term planning that we can for our community, and, and I put that a little bit in my position as an alderman at large. I, I recognize, and I hear clearly on all occasions, responses from citizens when something is gonna be occurring in Ward One, or Ward Eight, or Ward Ten, as to the concern. But I step back a little bit and try to envision what really is the best decision in the long run for the, for the growth, for the development, for the, the best results for the city, and in this case, as I said last week, I think this is, this is a decision that, that we need to take for the long-term planning. There is no certainty yet as to exactly what, but I think the point's been made well, that I'd rather have the control in regard to what most will best work, rather than leave it to a number of applicants coming in, doing some things that we're really not, are happy about. This is our opportunity to, to do some protection, to do some longer-term planning in regard to this, which responds to the staff as to the, how they're gonna approach this at this point. And I wanted to make one other point I think brought out tonight. We're acquiring the property hopefully to do the best planning, to do what is gonna work best in the long run. We are not giving it away to anybody. The assurance is that no agreement has been made with the casino as to exactly what they're doing, the assurance that we don't have anybody else in the wings saying, okay, I wanna do this, we need your help, and because you bought the property, now we need some further assistance. We're not giving this away. We're going to look for the development in the long run that is gonna be most appropriate, and we're gonna return our dollars, get our return on this at this point. But it's a, it's a, it's a step that I think we have to make for the long-term planning and development of our city. So, I will vote yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman.
Thank you. I also had a number of residents contact me regarding this matter, and really what I, I thought about is, as I thought about the corridor plan that our staff has talked about. We were one of the last interchanges that's not fully developed, and I went back and looked at some of the other interchanges off the highway, and looked at how they got planned and how, how they got laid out. And one glaring one was our interchange in Hillside. And I know the people of Hillside and the government of Hillside wish they could go back forty years and change around the way the plan went for the north side of their interchange. Of course, we all know, you've driven into the city, it was known as the Big Skunk Interchange. They have a landfill on the north side of their interchange, and that's what was there, planned forty years ago, and that went forward. Fifteen years ago, and maybe the government wised up, they went a different route on the south side of the interchange, and now they have retail restaurants, they have a nice establishment on the south side of their interchange. But I know that the government officials there wish they could go back forty years and change what is on the north side of their interchange. So, to me, this is about, as some people said, Alderman O'Connor, about opportunity, that we have the opportunity to seize this and to plan in a best manner. I often go to the outlet mall, I know what type of numbers we have there, it's an untapped gold mine. The tour buses that go to our outlet mall, I, I, when I go there, I talk to the people coming off the buses. I look for sales, 'cause I have three women who love to shop in my house, but I talk to the people coming off the tour buses. They come to the outlet mall, some of them, many of them, come downtown and arrange tours with the Paramount, but they're staying in hotels in our neighboring town. They're eating their meals in hotels and restaurants in our neighboring town. And if we could capture half of that, just half of it, eight million people a year come to our outlet mall. So, what we're talking about is opportunity. Do we wanna let this opportunity pass us by and, and give that opportunity to some other type of industry? I don't foresee anyone putting a, a landfill on the north side of Farnsworth there, but that would be the worst use, but some other use that we are not agreeable to, I, I think we have to seize this opportunity at this time. I'm gonna vote yes. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I will cap it off before we take the vote. And, you know, I'll start by sharing an email I received from a gentleman, a gentleman I respect. His name is Dixon Peterson. He's the leader of an organization, Men's Breakfast Club, has about a hundred, fifty to a hundred members, that meet in Stonegate in Alderman Lauchey's ward. And he was upset, these are the watchers of our tax dollars, these, these gentlemen, and I've been to speak with them at their meeting on number occasion. He wrote, nine point five million allotted to other properties, and now ten million on more land to develop? I know of three people who have sold their homes in Caroline and Stonegate the last year, and two others are seriously thinking about moving out of Aurora, Kane County, and possibly Illinois altogether due to taxes. I really believe that the city should have input from the citizens of Aurora, either from focus groups or on a ballot, okay spending. Tax breaks have to come into play, or you won't have residents to pay the bills if we continue to spend, spend, spend. Well, I can't speak for Illinois or for Kane County, I'll let the governor, the chairman And this is what was my response to Mister, Mister Dixon, Mister Peterson. I said, Dixon, I appreciate your email and your op- opinion, however, I disagree with your assessment. You are suggesting that we, as a city, are wildly and irresponsibly spending money with no regard for the taxpayer. On the contrary, this administration is proposing that we invest in our future with a clear and thoughtful plan and a real measurable return on our investment. Now, I understand that you're a retired citizen and may not be concerned with the next approximately ten years of growth in our city. Nonetheless, as an official elected to represent everyone's future, everyone's interest in Aurora, I have to propose what I believe will grow the city now and into the near future. We've often talked about the need for Aurora to progress and more effectively compete with our surrounding sister cities to win more economic development growth, and thus take some of the burden off of our homeowners paying high property taxes. Well, that happens by having private sector investment in Aurora. Yet, how do we expect others to invest in us if we aren't willing to invest in ourselves? Our chief finance, financial officer has created a solid plan to invest dollars in ourselves with a clear return on investment in approximately ten years. Moreover, our initial investment will assuredly be paid back to the city. Furthermore, in return, we will have new money, new development, new corporations, new residential growth for our city, realized by private sector. So now, you're intelligent, intelligent man, I know you recognize that will be ex- an extremely smart investment for us to get a return. So I expect that you live in a nice community and have a good and financially secure retirement life because you invested and prepared for your future appropriately. That's all I'm suggesting we do here and now. I would hope that you try to understand that, and if you have any questions about our financial plans, simply ask. There is no wild spending spree going on here, only overdue investment in our future. And I told him this, I'll leave you with this final question, isn't Aurora worth it? Isn't Aurora worth it? You know, this, this, this item passed out of finance unanimously with a fiscally responsible chairman who is a self-proclaimed contrarian, when need be. This is not one of those times, because isn't Aurora worth it? How many, now, many other concerns, of concerns we have now, with the same stringent objections that were given when we decided to develop the outlet mall? However, now that once barren piece of swampland is currently generating sales tax of appro- approximately seven point three million dollars a year and rising, per the Illinois Department of Revenue. We estimate a total property tax of close to three million payable in twenty nineteen. The school districts benefit eight hundred and forty thousand on just one of the two parcels of land, and these monetary benefits will continue to rise for Aurora and the school district, as long as we continue to improve our Farnsworth area. And isn't Aurora worth it? We're in competition with, with every other city in Illinois, in the Midwest. We have to position ourselves as leaders, otherwise our revenues will fall flat as our expenses continue to rise. We have the opportunity to make a smart investment with a big return. You've heard me long talk about the need to improve our cities downtown and our key gateways for economic development and our corridors. We've made key moves just these last couple of years in our downtown. Now it's time to turn our attention to our Farnsworth corridor, a long underdeveloped and underutilized area for growth, until right now. We have a tremendous opportunity to lead a long overdue turner, turnaround of our Farnsworth corridor at I D eight with our decisive action tonight. We've either, we're, we've earlier taken the first step with the purchase and planned demolition of the old motels that were spoken about on the west side of the street. We now have to move faster, smarter, and decisively in this competitive market to capitalize on this opportunity to acquire the Bilter property adjacent to the outlet mall and near I D eight in Farnsworth. Now is the time to leverage the success of the outlet mall and capitalize on the eight million visitors to the outlet mall a year, by purchasing this prime property so that we can control our destiny with a larger inventory to work with and develop. Similar to the approach we've taken the Route fifty-nine corridor with our inclusive and professionally-done expert consultant study, working with our talented staff, we are poised to take the same approach on the Farnsworth corridor. As, uh, Alderman Yamas pointed out, we should do, we absolutely will do, and determine the highest and best use for these properties. I'm confident we have a long-term strategy that will produce much-needed new jobs, businesses, and revenue gener- generating opportunities by the acquisition of this property. Our launch window to act is now, and we must take full advantage of this opportunity. And I'll leave you with the same question I posed to Mister Dixon Peterson. Isn't Aurora worth it? Aren't we worth it? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Ziyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Loft?
No.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor? Eleven A's, one N.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Is there a motion to spin the rules, consider items in a new business mode made, motion made by Alderman Hartburns, second of Alderman Franco? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Ziyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Loft?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Twelve zero.
Motion carries, will the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
Item nineteen dash zero five four six, the resolution authorizing the appointment of Elisabeth Cornell Abrego as the Assistant Director of Human Resources.
Been a motion by Alderman Jenkins, second of Alderman Hartburns, are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I will be abstaining, and I have a conflict on this matter.
Noted, Alderman Bug will be abstaining. Are there any other questions or concerns? With there being none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Ziyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Loft?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A's, zero N's, and one abstention.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. There are no requests for referrals. Is there a motion to accept the file of the treasurer?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Garza, all those in favor? Motion carries by voice vote, is there, there's been a motion to pay our bills, a motion to pay Hartburns, second by Alderman Jenkins, are there any questions, discussions on the bills? The clerk please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, before any motion adjourned, we had one more presentation.
Got you, got you, motion to pay the bill. Alright, so, um, yeah, I'm sorry, the motion to pay the bills, is there, there's been a motion made, can you, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Ziyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Loft?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Twelve A's, zero N's.
Motion carries, our bills are approved to be paid. Before we close out, um, business before the council, I believe we have a presentation.
Mr. Mayor, a step down, Chief of Staff as well. Tonight, as we, you know, close out quarter two, the second half of, of this year, we bid farewell to a stalwart staff member as she plans to transition to her next phase of her career. She's faithfully been here at the city for a number of years, and we hear her voice every single city council meeting as the city clerk. She's raised the bar, she's brought new standards, and we're very appreciative of the work of Wendy McCambridge, if we can give her a round of applause. Wendy, after a bittersweet moment as we say goodbye, she heads. She heads to her new role, the head of Government Affairs and Assistant to the President of the College of DuPage, our former Treasurer, Dr. Brian Caputo.
It's my pleasure to read the mayor's award of excellence. It's honorably presented to Wendy McCambridge, City Clerk, City of Aurora. For your years of service, professionalism, and executive leadership in the City of Aurora, you raise the bar and set new standards, you have amazingly big shoes to fill.
I'm not very good about this. Um, I thank you, I thank, um, Mayor Irvin, I thank the administration, I thank the Aldermen for all your support over the years. Uh, I've enjoyed my tenure here as the City Clerk, um, and I will deeply, deeply miss the people that I've worked with on a daily basis, not only within the administration, but also within the public, um, working with them and, um, interacting with them, and I will really miss that, uh, but I am looking forward to my next chapter as I move forward and move on to my next position. Still with, still within, you know, still next to Aurora, and we still service Aurora in the College of DuPage, so, um, but thank you very much for the opportunities I've been given here, um, I feel very deeply blessed, so thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Mayor, you can stay there as we say farewell to one amazing, uh, woman here in the city. We welcome as well our new Assistant Director of H R. Another round of applause, please, those ladies. Our HR Director and other Assistant Director, Alicia Lewis, uh, and Donna, to come on down with her car as well. Take a picture, then we'll invite her as his family. Brother and uncle, we're also sitting, plenty soon.
Mr. Mayor, I did wanna make the comment, congratulations to Liz because of the honor of being able to work with her a number of years, I think she's gonna do a tremendous job in her position. Uh, I did wanna mention in regard to Wendy, uh, the news that I got about her leaving is that, I think, well-termed, bittersweet. Uh, very, very happy for her and the opportunities, but obviously, uh, very sad that we're gonna lose a person whose level of professionalism, uh, has been par excellence, and just wonderful job that you have done as the clerk. Uh, even though I'm crushed that you weren't ever able to get through the consent agenda in one breath that I wanted you to do, so.
You almost did.
Yeah, almost, so my best wishes to you, so.
Alright, with no further business to come before the council, there's been a motion to adjourn by Alderman Hartburns, second of Alderman Franco, all in favor? Alright?
There are a few hamburgers and bratwurst left at the Paramount, I think you're gonna have to...